Good evening. Welcome to the Town Hall on Health Reform sponsored by the Wacom Alliance for Health Advancement and the Community Organizing Group for Health. I'm Sue Sharp. I'm Executive Director of the St. Luke's Foundation. I'm a Waha board member and the Chair of the Steering Committee that is guiding the Transforming Healthcare Initiative for the Alliance and our community. On behalf of the Board, many who are here this evening and they are listed in the program, and the staff of the Alliance, I want to thank you all very much for joining us tonight. Tonight is one more important milestone in Waha's 10-year journey to make healthcare work for everyone in Wacom County. Waha was formed in 2002 out of a health summit that brought over 200 local citizens together to talk about the issues facing healthcare across Wacom County. And since then, Waha has worked to connect people to insurance and care locally while promoting sound health policy and systems reform at the regional, at the state, and the federal level. We are a nonprofit organization that was created by the community, it's supported by the community, and it remains committed to meeting the health needs of this community. We have a very unique mission. We work daily to connect people to the healthcare they need while at the same time facilitating the long-term changes that will benefit health, us, and improve the experience of care. Waha staff works daily to help enroll people in public or private insurance, they provide referrals for mental health services and dental care, and when there are no other options, they qualify people for free specialty care that is donated by local health professionals and the hospital. It is the daily work of helping individuals and families with their health access needs that informs the work on the larger changes needed so that we can ensure that the health system is tomorrow, of tomorrow, is one that works for everyone. And that is what Waha's Transforming Healthcare Initiative is all about, and that is why you are all here tonight. For the last 18 months, the Alliance has been working with local citizens, health providers, consumers, business, and public officials to redesign a healthcare system that works for all people and is accountable to the community. Our goal is to maximize the benefits of federal and state reform and minimize the consequences. As part of that work, an independent citizens group, the Community Organizing Group for Health, has been advising Waha on that work, and tonight is a result of their commitment to bring that effort to the entire community. So what do we hope to accomplish tonight? We hope you, the audience, will be active participants in the evening. We hope that you will leave with a greater understanding of the Alliance and how we can be a resource to you in the future. We want to increase your understanding about healthcare issues in the community, that local health reform is underway here in Wacom County, and that this community-based effort to transform the healthcare system is truly unique. We want to hear the answers to the questions that we will be asking of the panelists tonight, and we want you to provide us with questions as well. And finally, we hope you will leave here tonight with a sense of excitement about the future possibilities and a desire to learn more and become engaged in our work. We believe that it is only by working together that we can make the changes that we need to improve health, and we also believe that there is no better place to make these changes than right here in Wacom County. So again, on behalf of the Board and the staff, thank you all for joining us this evening, and I'd like to introduce Mary, who will be moderating the rest of the evening and will give you a sense of what the format's going to be.
Well, good evening, and thank you for joining us for tonight's Town Hall. Before we begin, I'll briefly describe the role that I have this evening, the format we'll be using for the Town Hall, and the ground rules I'll be using to keep us on. So our first wish is to thank you for joining us tonight. This is a filmed event, so your questions that you ask tonight, if they are not able to be covered by the panelists, will also be covered on a website. So this is a beginning of an education process, and we hope that you think of it as a beginning of learning more about transforming healthcare in our community. So second, I want to clarify that there are no decisions being made tonight. As Sue mentioned, this is a process of learning, and we're at a beginning stage in our community to engage another level of questions that you will be raising. So I'll instruct how we'd like for you to share your questions with us tonight. When you came in, hopefully you found a green card somewhere seated near you. Folks have a handle on that. This is what we'd like for you to write your questions to the panelist on. It will help us keep the flow of conversation moving from the floor to the panel, and we'll begin tonight with some prepared questions that will be given to the panelist. These were prepared by the Community Organizing Group for Health, a co-host of tonight's Town Hall, to give you a little background, and then we'll jump into your questions. The first round of questions will last 45 minutes, so we ask if you have questions you'd like to be asking tonight, to please submit those before 6:55. There are volunteers, if you would, raise your hand in the aisles. They will collect your questions, so just hold it up. They'll run it up here to some volunteers working with the Town Hall event this evening who will sort them by topic, so we cover a broad range of topics that are raised tonight, and also raise questions to many of the panelists. So if you'd like to direct your question to a specific panelist, please write their name on your card. If you'd like me to identify your name, please write it legibly on the card, and let me apologize now for any mispronunciations. So again, our questions will be asked in two rounds. The first round will be questions posed to the panelists that I'll be asking. That point, I'm going to turn my position and face the panelist, but I wanted to introduce you to a few of these logistics for tonight's participation. And also to let you know that the main entrances and exits to the building are here at the aisle, the restrooms are off to the right, and we do hope that you would join us in silencing your cellphones, your pagers, put them on vibrate. So let's see if this is working better. How's that, folks? Thumb up, you can hear better? Okay. My apologies for those folks to whom my back is now turned. So for the ground rules, tonight we're going to respect each other's time by making sure we have one person speak at a time. We have some timekeepers down in front who are going to help the panelists keep time. They will have two minutes to answer each of their questions. At 30 seconds, you'll see a yellow card. At 10 seconds, you'll see a red card. And when time is up, I'll interrupt you, so we can get to as many questions as possible in this evening's time. And so let me apologize now in advance if for any reason I have to interrupt. We ask that all the individuals here this evening participate in creating an atmosphere of respect, that no matter what one's point of view or personal experience, all voices are afforded an opportunity to be heard here this evening. By being here tonight, we're asking that participants agree to remain silent when questions are read and panelists provide their answers. Refrain from clapping, cheering, or jeering when questions are asked or panelist gives a response. Refrain from attacking or derogatory use of speech in questions or responses. You'll be reminded of these ground rules if a matter comes up, and if it continues, an individual will be asked to leave, and there'll be people out in the foyer who can take your comments and questions with the urgency that might be required. So we do have a way for everyone to participate this evening, but our goal here is to ask as many questions as possible, and you can help us do that. So before we begin, you might notice that you were provided two surveys when you came in, and Waha would be pleased to learn from you how you would answer some of the questions that you're hearing the panelists be asked tonight, and how you would evaluate tonight's proceedings, so that you can tell Waha what they can do to be more inviting and do a better job in getting the community into this healthcare conversation. And for all those folks who are watching this by video after the event, there'll be opportunities to participate at Waha's website online, and you can follow the links to the survey and response to questions there. So with no further ado, I would like to begin our panel by introducing them. The questions again will be asked to some or all of the panelists, and I will indicate that when we begin, and each will be given two minutes to respond. So thank you for your participation this evening and support in making it a productive evening for all. So we'll begin by introducing the panelist Larry Thompson, the Executive Director of Wacom Alliance for Health Advancement. David Lynch is a family physician and Vice President of the Clinical Process Improvement and Business Development at Family Care Network. Nancy Steiger is the Chief Executive Officer and Chief Mission Officer at Peace Health St. Joseph Medical Center. Mayor Kelly Linville is the mayor of Bellingham. Sean Fannard is a community member and Community Organizing Group for Health Committee member, and a paramedic captain in Bellingham Fire Department Wacom Medic One staff. And Liz Baxter is a guest this evening who is an Executive Director of We Can Do Better, a nonprofit working in healthcare education in Oregon. So again, let's begin, and we'll start with a question that's directed to all of the panelists. Larry, after hearing the introduction about Transforming Healthcare Project, why is this an important effort in our community?
Okay. Is this microphone working okay? Thanks. You would pick me to start out, wouldn't you? So at one level, we have a system of healthcare in the United States more broadly that is troubled in ways. The costs are certainly not sustainable. We're not getting the outcomes that we should be getting for the amount of money we're spending. And generally speaking, as I talk with consumers out there, there's not complete satisfaction or anything close to it with the way the system is organized. People love their individual hospitals and providers, but when they all get together in a non-system, you see problems emerge. So what we're doing in healthcare as a society is not functioning, can't continue to function, in my opinion and the opinion of many others. At another level, that raises the issue of what's going to happen with all of this. And sooner or later, if we have 17 or 18% of our gross national product going to healthcare now, that'll rise to 18, 19, 20, 21% over time unless we act. And that action, that change in the way the system is organized to make it more effective and more efficient, could happen to us from the federal government, or state government, or large corporations, where it can happen more organically here in Wacom County. And it's our hope that it happens more organically here in Wacom County, so we're dedicated to involving not only the providers, but all of the consumers in an effort to reshape healthcare.
Thank you, Larry. David Lynch.
I've been, it's been my privilege to be a family physician in Wacom County, Bellingham area, since 1978, and during my time here, I've been impressed by the wonderful people I've had the privilege to serve, and also those that I've shared care with, the consultant physicians and allied health personnel, hospital officials, and others that I've had a chance to work with. And they've all been good people, and they continue to be. But during my time here, when I came to town, we had slightly less than 100 doctors in Wacom County, and now I just learned the other day, we have over 500 doctors on our medical staff. We don't know each other the way we used to, and we don't work together as easily as we used to. Things have gotten bigger, and they've gotten more complicated, and medicine's become more complicated, and the politics and the financing of it have all become more difficult in many cases. And so what I've realized is, and what I've missed as the community has grown and as the situation has changed, is we are missing a community place to talk about what's good and what's not so good about our experiences with healthcare, and a community place where we could actually take steps to address some of the things that we care about as a community. And so what I think is so important about the Transforming Healthcare Project is we have that chance. We have that chance to come together in a wide community focus, not just healthcare professionals talking to each other, but those of all of us who depend on each other for these services in the community, to talk about the way we want it to be, and then to be responsible for the decisions we make, and follow up on those decisions with our experience as we see how things go. I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and it's one that couldn't happen in every community. I don't think that large, complex communities with multiple hospitals and competing systems could necessarily come together the way we have the opportunity to do. So we haven't really done it yet, but I think the opportunity is there. So that's what makes me tremendously excited, and I think the opportunity to really make a difference in healthcare is local. The care is delivered locally, and by people who live here, to people who live here, and I think if we can get our act together, we can help even on a national stage to influence change in other communities as well.
Thank you. Nancy, after hearing the intro about Transforming Healthcare and this project, why is this effort important in the community?
First of all, I just want to thank Waha for the important role it's played in convening us here tonight, and the essential role it's played over the many years. It was part of what attracted me to Bellingham was the sense of community and how the community comes together to solve its problems, and so I just want to really start with that. And I would agree with what's already been said. Healthcare definitely has opportunity for improvement. The Institute for Health Improvement, which is a leading organization in healthcare, has named the Triple A aim approach to improve healthcare, which is to reduce cost while you're improving access and quality. And that is absolutely the job that we have to do. I wish it was as easy as it sounds. It's not an easy thing to do, but that is the work we need to do. We have to improve quality, we have to improve access, and we have to reduce costs at the same time. One of the things that is exciting to me is that both Waha's interests, our community's interest, the Institute for Health Improvement's interest, is very consistent with peace, health, mission values, and vision. And our mission statement talks about improving personal and community health. That's key to who we are and how we want to participate in the communities that we serve. And so I'm excited about the changes that are in front of us in healthcare of moving from managing volume to managing value, and then actually helping people improve the health and quality of life, not only of themselves, but the community in which they serve. So I think this is an exciting time, and I think with people like those on this panel in the room, we can really demonstrate best practice across the country, as Dr. Lynch said, and we've already got some good seeds in that, and look forward to continuing that great work.
Mayor Linville.
You can call me Kelly. I like that. When they introduced me, I thought, well, I wonder if people wonder why I'm here, because it doesn't look like I'm part of any healthcare system. And I think I'm here for two reasons. One is since 2002, Waha had, as a legislator, was my inspiration and my information for how I viewed healthcare policy at the state level. I truly believe the same thing that David said, that healthcare delivery is a local issue, and that we should be able to use our scarce and scarcer dollars to make sure that people in our community have access and quality care, and also focus on health rather than illness. So I really loved the years that I could use Waha as a sounding board, and they were, I think, did you say unique, or you used a really nice adjective to describe what they did. There was no other organization at the state level that looked at the opportunities to work together through all the sectors, to focus on the patient, than Wacom County and Waha did. And I was very proud to represent a district where that was the case. I was asked to serve as a community representative when this project first started, and it was interesting for me to step back from a policymaking role and represent people, and I could do that in some level because of what people had told me. "I'm getting less healthcare, I can't change a job because I will lose my healthcare, it's too expensive, my children don't have access, we only have to go to the emergency room," and so that was interesting for me. And then secondly, as mayor of Bellingham, I have the pleasure of leading an organization that provides very good healthcare to their employees, very comprehensive healthcare and very expensive healthcare. It costs us between $4,000 and $6,000 a year per employee, and we have over 800 employees. I don't want that quality of that healthcare to decrease, but I also understand that more and more of our budget is going to the cost of healthcare, and less and less is going to the service for the community. And so I applaud Waha, and I want them to keep going and involve the community to get really good results, because you have so far. You're not just starting. You're going into another phase, so I want to compliment you on all the work you've already done.
So Sean Fannard, share your thoughts from your perspective.
Thank you. Thomas Jefferson wrote several hundred years ago that we are all endowed with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And while we can all agree that we want to live, and we can all agree that the pursuit of happiness is individual, liberty is something that we have to come to agreement about. What is it that we want liberty for, or what is it that we want liberty from? I happily trade my free time to my employer, Kelly, in exchange for a paycheck. I take my freedom for, to pay for freedom from such things as having to deal with my own sanitation. I'm very happy to give a check to the city every month so that I don't have to dig my own latrines. That's freedom from, in my mind. Healthcare in this country cannot promise us freedom from disease. That's part of the one-way ticket that we all got with life. Nobody can promise us that. And it increasingly takes more and more of our freedom for, of our free time. An ever greater percentage of our liberty goes to pay for healthcare. And while we enjoy in this community tremendous assets in this regard, world-class healthcare in a community of our size is unthought of in most of the world, certainly, and in most of the United States. We are very lucky in that regard. And so it is important for our community to choose, to seize this opportunity when the leadership in the healthcare world is saying we all must move forward together. It is important for the community to stand with them and beside them and to be heard to continue to live in the best place in the world.
And Liz, we'd love to hear your perspectives on this question.
Great, thank you, and just thank you all in the Waha and the COG for inviting this stranger from Portland to come and be a part of your panel. There are two things, and I think they somewhat echo a couple of the other comments. One of the reasons that this is really important is because Waha recognizes the difference between getting to health in Wacom County as opposed to focusing on getting everybody access to healthcare. And the access to healthcare incredibly important, but if the goal is really the Triple A, it is really about how do we actually produce health out of all of the money and talent that we invest in our system, that will take a different set of strategies. And I think that having an organization that has that kind of a focus is incredibly important. And the second piece that just jumps out at me is this notion of kind of local power and local decision-making. And I have had, over the years, the opportunity to spend, I think I have probably been in about every 10-mile-square district in the state of Oregon, listening to people talk about what's important to them. And what's local really depends on where you are. So, you know, I think of myself. So I was born in New York, went from New York to the Los Angeles area, went to school in San Francisco, I moved to Portland. There's a potential I may be moving to Bellingham, and, you know, each time I'm kind of moving smaller. But I'll tell you that in each of those places, they also could look and see who was bigger than them. The federal government, way bigger than what happens in New York City. And so the relativity of what's local and what's not really depends on where you are and who you think is in the way of you getting the things done you want to get done. But the opportunity that exists here for community members to play a role in the decisions that get made that impact the people in this community is huge. And for me, inspiration is actually one of the things. I both learned a lot in the last year in getting to know the folks with Waha, and I have been inspired by the community leaders, you know, some of whom have been working on this for 30 years and some that are very new, just how important it is to feel like you get to shape what's happening in your own community. And so I'm just very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. So I hope that gives people a sense of who's on the panel and how we're approaching the topic. We have a second question, which is going to be posed to David Lynch and Nancy Steiger in relation to why doctors or providers would want to participate in improving the local healthcare system. So we'll start with you, Nancy.
Well, when I looked at the question, the first thing I thought is, why wouldn't doctors want to participate? This is the work that they signed up to do, and I think the people closest to the work can most clearly see what's broken in healthcare, and they want to be part of improving the health of their community. They are patients, their family are patients, they care about their patients, and so they would want the healthcare system for those who they serve to be the best that it could be, in fact, world-class. But I think the challenge between where we are and where we need to go for all of us, you know, the idea sounds great, but navigating from here to there, it's not very easy to think, well, how do you fix this thing? Because it is a big problem, and I'll be the first to say, we have to reduce costs in healthcare, and I run one of the most expensive healthcare organizations there is, a hospital. Hospitals are the most expensive part. But fixing it is not something that a hospital necessarily can do. There are so many other components, like the things that each of you and I do to improve or don't improve our health are very instrumental to this. So what we're trying to do from the hospital perspective is to reduce costs and to work with our physicians to reduce costs, and to work with our community to do so. But part of the reason we're trying to grow is also to reduce costs, because in the growth strategy helps us spread overhead. And the extent to which we can spread our costs over larger populations, the incremental cost goes down. So we're looking at working closely with physicians, with our community, and trying to figure out how to get from here to there. Not an easy question, but one that we are very concerned of, our physicians are concerned about, and our community is, and I think by working together, and not pointing fingers, because we are the system, every one of us is the system. I think by working together, we'll come up with a better solution than any of us will individually.
Your thoughts, David?
Well, the way I think of this is, first of all, medicine is a profession, and what that's supposed to mean is, we're supposed to put the interests of those we serve ahead of our own interests, and we're supposed to act in the best interests of those we serve. And if we see problems that prevent us from doing the job the way it should be done, we're supposed to raise those problems, we're supposed to do something about them. One of the problems that I find frustrating, and I think this is true for a lot of us in healthcare, is where do we take those problems, and how do we get them solved? And maybe I could tell a story that might illustrate this. This just happened, but I could tell lots of stories. This just happened this month with a couple that live in the county, near Linden. An older couple, a man in his 80s taking care of his wife who has dementia, and she's pretty confused, but he does a beautiful job with her. She'll typically wake up during the night and be all dressed and ready to go find the children. She thinks the children are missing, and he'll sit her down, he'll offer her a cup of cocoa, they'll have some cocoa, and, you know, he'll get her back to bed, and she'll do fine. But she's fragile, her place is tenuous in the community, and they need probably help soon to continue to live somewhat independently. So the other day, it's getting towards the end of Saturday, and she's got a little bit of a cough. She used to be a smoker, and her husband thinks, you know, she'd sleep a lot better tonight if I had a little something for the cough. Calls the doctor, their office is just closing on a Saturday, they're not going to be there anymore. He says, you know, maybe it'd be smart to get her checked just to be sure she doesn't have something worse going on, so he suggests they go into- So he suggests they go into the after-hours urgent care center. So by the time he gets her bundled up, and by the time they get on the road, and by the time they get out of Linden and into Bellingham, they're near the end of that institution's hours, and they say, you know, you might need an x-ray, maybe we should just have you go to the emergency room. So they go to the emergency room. Now, yeah, it's later in the day, she's elderly, she's got a cough, and she starts to be in a place and in an environment that's unfamiliar to her, doesn't act in her normal cooperative way, it's hard to do a good evaluation. And they think, well, maybe we should just keep her here overnight to observe and make sure everything's going to be okay before she goes back home. So they do that.
Going to need to trim your story to the key punch there.
Did I have a red or a yellow card? I'm on yellow. Anyway, to make a long story short, she was in the hospital for three days, she needed drugs to calm down and deal with her dementia. She never did get anything for her cough for about two days because she was acting out so severely. We spent thousands of dollars. There were good people who helped in her care every step of the way, but we didn't do the right thing for her, and we wasted money in the process. How do we fix problems like that? And where do I take that? And largely, the care is delivered because of the way we get paid and the tools that we have available to us to solve some of these problems. These are the kinds of things, I think, as a community, we can make a lot better.
Thank you. Sorry to trim these important messages.
Thank you, I got going and I didn't see the card, so.
We'll be bolder at the card table. So our next question actually looks at the question improvement from a different angle, and it's directed to Sean and Liz. And we're going to learn a little bit more about what sorts of information would you want to help you make an informed decision as a health care consumer?
Having had this question in advance, I was a little bit stumped by it at first. From my point of view, we are drowning in information. There is information at our fingertips about our health care and about diseases and about treatments. What we need is interpretation. What I need as a patient is interpretation, and that's what I value most about the family physician I see, is that he presents decisions in terms of choice and in terms of dialogue with me. And if he doesn't know the answer, he says, "I don't know." I think this is a wonderful way to look at medicine and how it should move forward, not as a pedagogy, not as thou shalt do this, oh patient, but person, these are choices that you have. And the information that we need is that we have choice as individuals in how we want to be well, not just how we'll treat disease. The information that we need, I think, is more broadly stated, that our choice matters as individuals, that we need to be activated, in the term used in the parlance, that we need to be willing participants and active participants in our own health and wellness to help to curb the costs of health care and to help manage this system, not just in terms of, "Doctor, what are you going to do for me?", but what am I going to do as your partner and participant in this goal of wellness that we all have?
And Liz?
So when I think about what information does a consumer need, for me, it boils down to one question, and it is the question that I get asked most often, and it's, who do I call? Who do I turn to? When? Fill in the blank, it's happening to me. And it is the hardest question for us to answer, because we think about, you know, how do we get somebody access to that health library? How do I get somebody the right fact sheets about their disease? And it very well may be just an add-on to what Sean is saying about how we have so much information, but not necessarily better access, that what I might need is just somebody who can help me know, when do I need that, and how do I get to that? And so the information I might need is really something very clear, and I mean this in as plain of language, regardless of the language one speaks, plain of language that we can get to. What are my options? What works for the condition that I have? And seriously, tell me, like, what's promising as well as what might have been promising 20 years ago? How can I get more information if I want it and need it? And where do I go for that? Who can I talk to? And I think that the simplest thing, which, you know, we probably all would agree on, is we have more access to data and less access to somebody. And really, sometimes what we need is a somebody who can cut through kind of both the BS and sometimes just kind of the inanity that surrounds our system. And then the last thing that I want to know is, if something's not working for me, who do I talk to so that the next person who walks in behind me, things can be better for them? If I had that kind of information, I feel like I could maneuver through the system better.
Thank you. Question four is a bit complex, a few layers to the question. What does it mean for a health care system to be accountable for the affordability of health care, health and well-being of the community, and respectful partnerships between providers and patients? We're going to have Larry and David respond to this question.
All right. Nice three-part question here. I think a lot of what we're trying to do in this transforming health care project is to heighten a sense of accountability, to try to get the health care system to be more responsive to individual consumers and to the needs of us collectively. So how do you do that? Well, I think at the highest level, we need to be able to measure what it is that we're getting, and we really can't do that at a community level right now. I mean, each individual organization can tell you what they're doing, and Peace Health, as large as it is, is, I think, probably only maybe 45, 50% of the total dollar spent here. So we can't get a handle on what it costs us and on what our outcomes are. We can't tell you as a community how we're doing in treating schizophrenia overall. Dave could probably tell you how he's doing in his practice, but, you know, how do you add all that stuff up? So you got to be able to measure it, you got to have a sense of common goals that comes from the dialogue like we're having tonight, be able to hammer out agreement on what it is that we're trying to achieve with the health system. And then finally, you have to have some kind of feedback mechanism between the information about how you're doing and the goals that the community has set for performance. So you have to have some ongoing way to communicate between those that are served by the system and those that are providing the care, and a way to monitor and measure whether the results are being achieved over time.
Your perspectives?
Well, to be accountable, to me, means that you're responsible. And right now, I think responsibility is lacking across the system. Money continues to flow, even if you have an outcome that's not good, you'll get paid to come back and fix it. And the responsibility isn't necessarily resting anywhere in particular. So first of all, we're responsible, as Nancy said, as people who need health care, we're responsible to do the job that we can do. But not everybody's in a position to do that, and maybe needs somebody else to help them be responsible for the care they're delivering. And that feeling of responsibility then leads you to say, I need to measure what I'm doing, I need to know how my quality compares, I need to know how I'm spending money, and I need to be accountable for those results to the people that I'm working with. So I often tell people, I think of my grandfather, who was a doctor at the turn of the last century, and he and my grandmother would sit in the bottom of their house, people would show up, and he'd do whatever they, you know, came for, and that was it. He was not, he did not feel responsible, that he was their partner, in the sense that he would go get them if they didn't come in and he knew they had a chronic disease. The way they practiced medicine was a lot different. Today, we know that if we have a relationship with somebody and we know what their chronic conditions are, and we can help them to be the best doctor they can be, the 99% of the time they aren't with us, that we're going to fulfill our responsibility in a much better way than if we just sit there and wait for them to show up. So I think it means, it has a lot to do with how we organize ourselves, how we see ourselves in partnership with people, and what we hold ourselves accountable for.
So we're going to turn to the role of the community here in asking both Liz and Kelly Linville, what role the community can play in transforming our health care system. So if you don't mind, we'll start with the local voice and your thoughts on that effort from the community.
Well, one of the things that I think that Waha has done such a good job in is always reaching out to the community and asking what the problem is. So many times, we decide on what the solution should be at the policy level before we find out and really define what the problem is, and then we don't keep asking what the problem is. So one of the things that's great about this forum is that if the community stays engaged with this project, the outcomes will be so much better. And that means not being shy about letting people know if you think that the project is on the right track or the wrong track, not waiting to be asked, because sometimes projects get going in specific times when you have a question or a comment or whatever, it's not the time when someone is asking you for it. And then focusing on the community goals of health care. I think one of the city's goals is to provide both good care, good access to care, good health programs, good preventative programs for our employees, like Sean. Looks pretty healthy. But also to look at the other things that affect health, and there are many things that affect health in our community that aren't medicine-related. So there is poverty, and there is hunger, and there is adequate employment, and a lot of things that the city itself is partners in. And also, the idea that health care is not just physical, it's also mental. And we've made some great strides in mental health parity, but I think that's another thing that we need to make very sure as this moves forward. We're looking at the total health of the person, and if we get off track, I think it's partially the community's responsibility to let us know so we can make adjustments in where we're going.
Liz, a lot of insight you're bringing. I'd love to hear your views.
So I have three and a, what I'm going to call a half-things. One is about getting better informed, and I think that, you know, you all are here tonight, but trying to, you know, understand what are the problems that are trying to be solved, and what are the options that are being proposed, and that it isn't always that there's a list of pros and cons, but that quite often it's understanding, ah, I really want to go in this direction, but how's it going to impact these other things over here? That every step we take in one direction pulls attention on something else. And so being engaged and informed enough that when you weigh in, you actually are an informed person being able to do that. I think of the fact that you all could be sitting at home watching, you know, NCIS or whatever is on tonight, and, you know, and instead you're sitting in this room, and that in just by itself is really pretty incredible. The half-piece I would put in the second one is to encourage you all to look around this room and to identify who's not here. Who should be in this room that, you know, you know in the community, this is important? How do you get them to the next meeting? And that we all have different contingents and different hats we wear, just trying to continue to broaden the table each and every time. And then the last thing for me, you know, in this kind of, is somewhat about accountability that's been mentioned, but the next time that there is an opening on a board, a committee, a council, a work group, a task force, whatever you want to call it, that you or somebody that you know, putting your name forth, that you're willing to be not just the hearer and the reactor, you're also willing to be at the table trying to put things together and propose ideas that the rest of the people in the community are going to react to. That the more that we can kind of stir the pot on who those decision-makers are by pulling more of you up here and me back there, I think the stronger a community gets.
Thank you. This last question in our first round will be posed to all the panelists, and we will be asking you to share what you're optimistic about in regards to the transforming health care project and where there's any lingering hesitation. If you don't mind, we'll start with Nancy and move out to Larry and come back around.
I'm an optimist, so I'll start with my optimism, and I am optimistic about being in a community like Bellingham, where people actually care more about the community than they care about themselves. I'm optimistic that we have the incredible medical staff that we have in this community. A community this size is, it's unbelievable, the talent that we've attracted in terms of the physicians who have come here to provide care for us and their community. They are absolutely world-class and could go anywhere. And as a hospital administrator, it's important to me, because you can't have a good health care system if you don't have good physicians. I'm optimistic because our organization has been part of health care reform and was part of getting it passed more than four years ago, and we are very much in sync with where the health care of the country is going. So I think we have a lot of assets in this community, and I think together, we can really make things happen in the ways other communities cannot do it, so I'm optimistic about those things.
Thank you.
So Nancy's covered a lot of what I would have covered, so I'll be brief here. I am optimistic primarily because of the culture here in this part of, part of the state, part of the country. Just look at this meeting and all of you who are willing to take time to come out tonight. I think if you were having this meeting in McAllen, Texas, there might be 15 people out there. So that's a good thing. As we've worked on this transforming health care project, we've had an awful lot of interest and engagement, and that makes me feel really optimistic. We've had literally dozens and dozens of those world-class physicians that have been involved in a very substantive way, and we've had several forums, each of which has been well-attended for the public at large. Virtually every health care organization in the county has at one time or another touched in with us and talked with us about their views and expressed an interest in participating. I will take on the question of what I'm pessimistic about, where Nancy, I think, didn't.
Oh, okay.
All right. So the pessimism is, this is a huge problem, and it is so huge, and it's been with us for so long, that it's going to take not only a lot of talent and a lot of dedication, it's going to take some good luck, too.
Would you like me to go back to pessimism? I got so excited. Come around, Liz, your thoughts here?
You can do pessimism, though.
So, since I have a hard time with, like, either ors, I kind of mold what I have in both an optimism and at least an eyes-wide-open kind of a category instead of hesitance. The leadership here is incredible, and I mean, this is both Waha, but all of the layers of folks that I've had a chance to meet in the community, and I think the deeper that those connections go, the greater the opportunity to do something profound here. I'm actually kind of optimistic that what comes out of this community can be a model for other small communities around the country, because a lot of what gets tested and written up in the literature comes out of large metropolitan areas. And it's really hard to translate large metropolitan area down to local, small towns. Way easier to translate going up the other way. And I just think we need more opportunities like this. And so in my eyes-wide-open category, I think there is a big risk. There's a risk financially, there's a risk that this may or may not work in terms of data and trying to actually document the changes that need to be made. And so, you know, the thing that I hope for is that you all give yourselves permission to stumble, and when you stumble, it's okay. You know, I think that it's, as long as you can do it, eyes-wide-open, that's really helpful. You know, the last thing, and I'm like a terror, I butcher quotes all the time, but as you were speaking earlier about accountability, I was thinking of a quote from Albert Einstein, which I believe is something like this, which is, you know, the things that we count often aren't the most important. So it's something like, what's counted doesn't count, and what does count is often not counted. And so I just, you know, it's the caution that I give, that we're still trying to figure out what's the most important things, but we're doing that simultaneously with trying to hold everybody accountable. So that's our challenge.
Coming around to this end of the panel.
Well, the optimism, I share everything that's been said, and I would say that I'm also optimistic because we've had wonderful discussions. When we talk about problems and the people that are involved, they're substantial discussions, they're honest discussions, they're collaborative discussions, and that really fills me with a lot of optimism and hope. I'd say the pessimism, if I have any, would come from the fact that that isn't typical. You know, we just lived through, all of us, four years of the most god-awful discussion about health care that you can imagine. That was not substantive, it was not rational, it was not fact-based, it was fear-based, and sometimes in, as we talk about it, that's where people go. And so my pessimism is, how do we help people to understand and become part of a solution instead of carrying old stories that are blocking them from really participating in a way that makes sense? Because it's a national problem, it's a community problem, and maybe health care wasn't in the Declaration of Independence, but it's still a problem we have, and how are we going to solve it?
Sean, your thoughts on this?
Thanks, very specifically, and to kind of echo what Decr-.
Thanks, very specifically, and to kind of echo what Decra Lynch was saying earlier. I'm optimistic that the healthcare industry leaders in our community are embracing a move towards capitation, meaning being paid a set amount for caring for an individual based on who that individual is, rather than the fee-for-service model that we've been working under up to this point. That gives us incredible flexibility, I think, in moving forward to change the model of how healthcare is delivered. And so, one of the, what drives my optimism is that these leaders sitting here today in the Transforming Healthcare Project are looking at different ways that this model can be manipulated to get better outcomes. My pessimism is tied to that as well, that I think, sitting on the Community Organizing Group for Health, that they're not looking far enough. That the way that the community, in as I understand it, both as an individual and as a paramedic and as a member of the COG, the community views wellness often much more broadly than the medical industry has allowed itself to. And I would encourage them to look more broadly at what a medical home is, what the base of people's medical needs and wants are to achieve not just cure or treatment of disease, but wellness.
As a broken record, I am very optimistic, but I base my optimism on performance. And everything that I have seen this organization do has improved the access, and now I have to get used to this, the advancement of wellness and healthcare. So, my optimism is, in our community, we put aside labels, especially at the Waha table, and we had varied interests focusing on a common goal. So, my optimism is very high for this endeavor. I've also seen the energy it takes for an effective local organization to stand up to the challenges that other people who don't understand the Bellingham way or the Watcom County way present. And so, I guess my concern, it's not, I mean, I've seen, I've seen this group never give up, very tenacious. But at some point in time, you know, you're tired always trying to explain why this works for us, and maybe some of the things could work for you, or you figure out your own model. So, I, that's the only negative thing, and it's not really negative, it's just a concern, that we won't be able to be persistent enough to make it over the top. But we wanna really be optimistic and effective and drag everybody along with us, and so far, you've done a good job with that.
And did you have anything you wanted to add here?
On the negative side.
I hate to end on a negative note.
Yeah, don't do that.
Maybe we should just leave it. I think getting from here, getting from here to there, I think, is really the big challenge. You know, we know where we wanna go, and we know where we are, but taking the steps it's gonna take to make the change is big. And it affects every, every part of the healthcare system and everyone, because it means we have to behave differently, too. And do we really have the willingness and the ability to do that? And when I mean "we," I mean us as consumers. We have to make different choices in healthcare, at the beginning and all during our life and at the end of life. People don't make decisions about end-of-life, unfortunately, until they're in the intensive care unit. That's the wrong time to make that decision. We spend a lot of money in the first two weeks and the last two weeks of life. So, I think the changes in healthcare are as much about us individually as they are about the system.
Thank you for sharing. It's helpful to hear what practical realism looks like from those who are driving the car currently. So, we do appreciate hearing both the upside and also any of those little moments of, "I want all eyes on deck on this part." And so, we do have a question. We're now gonna shift to asking questions that have not been prepared by the organizing group, but these are questions that you've raised, and they've been passed up to me. And what we're doing is asking them in topic areas by theme. So, this first one gets at some of the information you were just discussing, so I think it's a great segue. And what is being asked of Larry Thompson and Liz Baxter is to speak more on other voices. What is being done to involve other voices in transforming healthcare planning processes, such as nursing, higher education, third-party payers, independent providers, alternate-care providers, persons of different colors, traditions, cultures, and practices? We have many higher education institutions in our community that are graduating a skilled RN workforce. We also have new scopes of work being trusted into new talent. So, could you tell us how you're bridging all those voices and engaging these other voices we're not yet seeing on this panel?
Well, I think that's a fair criticism. As much involvement as we've had, it's always possible to have more involvement. And what we've tried to do, and I'll underscore "tried," is to be as receptive to those of you that come, approach us about this project, and to do as much listening as we can. Each of us comes with our own history, our own set of, our own prism on the world of healthcare, the world of medical care. So, that's a starting point, but so long as those of us that are engaged in this activity are willing to be good listeners and respond, and afford opportunities to hear alternative messages, I think that's a good start. It won't guarantee success, but it's the right path. And that's one of the things that's been really unique, I think, about this whole undertaking compared to most other parts of Washington State relative, not to mention the rest of the country, is a lot of this is happening in closed rooms. A lot of this delivery system reorganization is happening in small rooms here and there, and it literally is not open to the other voices. So, you are to be congratulated for holding us accountable for listening to you, and keep it up.
And Liz, the question is posed to you as, from your perspective, what have you learned as a person from outside of Watcom County about ways of involving voices and diverse perspectives of those who are not already identified as members of the healthcare system?
You know, as you were reading the list that was in the question, my brain was already, like, adding other groups to the list. And, and so, I think two things. One is, it is possible to keep expanding who's at the table. And, and I have seen that happen, but it takes work and it takes time. And as much as you might be asking that question of Waha and the COG and the mayor and the health system, I reflect the question back at you, because what's gonna expand this table is you going, "There's somebody from the tribal community that really should've been at this meeting. There's somebody who works with at-risk youth that really should've been at this meeting." And, and it's because you know the community, as well as these leaders know the community. And expanding the table is gonna be a joint process of just continuing to shift, who do you expect to be there when you walk in the room? And, and I think in Oregon, six years ago, and I'm gonna say this and hope no one takes offense when I say this, so apologies. Six years ago, if we were having a conversation about health reform, there would be 10 to 12 people in the room who were all white men over the age of 50 in suits and ties. Today, if a meeting like that occurred, there would probably be an article in the Oregonian saying, "Oh, my God, I can't believe that that group of people came together to talk about what's happening to the rest of the state." That the involvement of leaders from communities of color, including emerging leaders, and we've just really made a very big emphasis on leadership from, among people who are, like, in their mid-20s to their mid-30s. How you reach out to those different organizations and sectors and say, "You know, this might not be something that raises to, 'That's what I'm gonna do this Thursday morning,' but you need to be in the room." I think it's gotta be a joint effort, but it is amazing how much can happen when you change that dynamic.
Thank you. And following this topic, in regard to areas of health that haven't been discussed yet this evening, what can we do to ensure dental care and access is available for all? And this is to anyone on the panel, because it hasn't been raised yet.
Well, I'll jump in. You know, it's, it's one body, and the fact that we segregate certain kinds of care, dental care or mental health care, isn't because people who have thought about, "How can I best help this person?" have organized it that way. It's because special interests have organized themselves to provide those services in such a way that they get dealt with separately, and then they get administered separately. And I really think by taking a holistic approach and understanding the contribution that good dental care and dental health makes to overall good health is crucial if we're gonna be successful. We have learned that people with, with advanced dental disease have many problems of a medical nature that are related to their dental disease. So, the siloing is really terrible, and to me, that's an example of the kind of thing we could make different here if we wanted to, and I would say the same thing about mental health care.
Yes, absolutely.
I think I'd like to just add a little bit, just based on a past life. It's very important to let policymakers know at the state and the federal level, some of the impacts of not having, whether it's dental care or mental health care or something else. Because a lot of the funding for those, for people without access, come from the government. And when we looked at triaging healthcare, there were very few of us, and I actually put myself in the other category, because I'm so well-educated by my community about the effects, that didn't understand that correlation between physical health and dental health. And so, those were like easy, easier programs to cut. So, I think we all need to make sure that our, the people that are making the policies, that are allocating the funding, understand clearly the kind of priorities that our community has, for we're, we'd like to see some of those investments.
Very briefly.
Please.
About a year and a half, two years ago, the state of Washington cut the dental care for adults under the Medicaid program. And in this community, the response to that was to create a program of dentist volunteering care and linking up individuals who needed care with that free dental care. So, that program exists and is still ongoing. We also have here, both of our community health centers, both community clinics, have reasonably good integrated dental care with behavioral health and medical care. There's onsite dental care, and that's very much a step in the right direction. I'd also wanna point out that there's a foundation in the state, the Washington Dental Services Foundation, that is very interested in integration of dental care. They've been working with Waha and certain other groups around the state about how we might practically get that done on the ground and actually begin to integrate dental care into the routine in, in medical offices and vice versa. So, there, it's, it's not a completely fallow field.
I just wanted to add two things. One is, it's pretty stunning, some of the data that's showing, you know, whether it's one or two, that a dental infection is getting really close to being the top reason for somebody on Medicare to end up in the ER. So, the notion that we can continue to separate what happens inside of our mouths from what happens to the rest of us, not gonna help us solve the health system crisis. But the thing, you know, I almost would love to have you all scheduled a two-hour community forum just about what's happening with dental. Because if there's anything that can make me, sometimes when I pull my hair out, you talk about wanting to change something, and it immediately creates a lobby that's gonna tell you why it is you can't change it the way that you wanna change it. We have not paid a lot of attention to how dental insurance works, how those carriers operate, and having pediatric dental become part of the essential health benefit, and I don't, you know, I don't mean to, like, make anybody crazy in the room with language that doesn't make sense, it has created this massive dental lobby. And so, how you go about making change is as important as wanting to change something. And that's where the rubber hits the road and where the importance of having this kind of community dialogue can become so critical, because you can solve it if you get everybody in the room. It's when the folks that don't wanna change stay outside in the parking lot, and they let 200 people come in here and talk about it, knowing they can stop you. You wanna get the people who could stop you at the table, so that you can try and strategize this together.
Any other thoughts on the dental question?
I would just say that the ER is the wrong place to provide dental care.
Yes, absolutely.
We have a follow-up question that gets at another dimension of a similar question. What do you see as complementary healthcare, and how is this going to be integrated in the changes with healthcare in Watcom County? Many people prefer healthcare through naturopathic and acupuncture, chiropractic, massage, many other complementary medicine pathways. Could you speak to how these will be integrated into the healthcare in Watcom County, starting with Larry, and then anyone else who could speak to those particular modalities and integration?
Okay. So, one thing that I think we have pretty close, if not complete, universal agreement on is that the complementary therapies are really, really popular with many consumers. This is, this is a part of the healthcare system that we need to be working on figuring out strategies for integration, not turning away and pretending that it doesn't exist. So, we also know that the practitioners of many of the complementary therapies are organizing themselves to interact with transforming healthcare in this community. And there are, there's a forum coming up, I believe it might be the 6th of February, where complementary providers are going to be talking among themselves and hearing also in some dialogue with leadership of the Transforming Healthcare Project on how an interaction between the different types of providers might occur. Now, having said that, we've got a ways to go to figure out the precise methods for integration, just as we do with dental care and some of the other areas. So, we're still in a stage where there's room to storm and norm and figure this out together.
Other perspectives on the panel to this question?
Well, I would just mention that we've had some good dialogue already with people who are in alternative types of healthcare modalities and delivery. And I think that those of us in, you know, more traditional healthcare, those of us in complementary healthcare, all need to be held to a standard, which is, are we delivering care that makes sense? Is it effective? Is it cost-effective? And when you do that, I think we'll, we'll make decisions together as a community about what we wanna have be available. And it's starting to happen, and it's really helpful to me. I'll use a very common problem of back pain. You know, there's a lot of people you can see for back pain. I would be one of them, but a chiropractor would be another. So, there was this wonderful study that was done, looking at care with physical therapy, with just taking it easy, and with having chiropractic care. And I'm sorry to tell you that we all did about the same. So, that's valuable information, you know? So, why should we be telling people what to choose if they feel more comfortable with something that is, is in line with how they're gonna improve in their philosophy of the way they want their care delivered? So, I think that we need more information, and we need the willingness to talk to each other about these issues, if we're gonna make a financially responsible, medically responsible choice.
And along that line, we have a question about a full authoring of health options, including access to legal healthcare options of abortion, death with dignity, and other end-of-life care. Could you speak to how those choices will be integrated and covered in Watcom County's accountable healthcare system?
I wanna go back to the other question and then jump to that, because I think...
The complementary?
Yeah, the complementary. I think attitude and hope are complementary healthcare activities, and how you feel about something, I think it's gonna very much affect the outcome that you have. I think you were alluding to that. But I did wanna mention that we do offer massage and acupuncture, both hospice and in our new cancer center, which if you haven't seen it, please go see it, it's fantastic. I also think that patients' involvement in their care and their, and their treatment is essential, and the best time to be involved is before you're sick. So, making your decisions about how you're gonna get healthcare and what healthcare you want, and what decisions you want made when you can't make them, are essential that you do before you're in that position. Death with dignity isn't usually a hospital situation, there's a two-week process and so forth, but we wanna make sure that people are not finding themselves on a ventilator in an ICU being forced to make those decisions. We all need to be making those decisions now about what we wanna do at the end of life, not having our family do it for us. Nothing will tear a family apart more than having to make decisions for another family member.
We have a wonderful opportunity right now in the community, where we're having a community education effort around end-of-life decision-making, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to really get the word out about this. I can tell you that, you know, I think we all know this, we, as Sean said, we're on a one-way... a one-way journey, and we will all be passing from the earth at some point, but how we do that and what our values are around the care we receive are very important things that we should be taking the time to think about. And surprising to some people is the fact that when compassionate care is delivered, let's say with hospice, instead of all the things we sometimes do to people, people actually live longer sometimes than they do when they're so-called doing everything. So there's more to this than just medical care. It's kind of how you treat people in a respectful, kind, and loving way. And if people think about it ahead of time and make their wishes known, it can really be a wonderful thing. And by the way, it saves money, but that's not the reason to do it. The reason to do it is because this is the way we would all like to be treated.
Yes, my comment is, we should make sure that all health care options are available in our community, or we turn into some of the states that don't provide legal health care and limits people's choices. So I think it's really important, you mentioned end-of-life care, but then there is abortion, there is birth control, there's a lot of other things that tend to become social issues, even if they're legal. And I think it's important that our community allow people those choices, that we're not limited based on, there's no provider in our community that will allow us our choice.
We have another question that follows well, asking a question about access, and this is posed to you, Mayor Linville. What can be done on a political and social level to control the cost of pharmaceuticals for everyone, not just the low-income folk?
There were a lot of policy issues at the state level, there's probably some at the federal level I'm not aware of, that would have allowed us to control pharmaceutical costs better than we do now. And that's, I guess, why I bring back up the idea of making sure that policymakers understand that access to affordable pharmaceuticals is very important. There are programs right now where the companies themselves will, you know, help lower-income people. But the truth is, there's some prescriptions that even non-low-income people like myself can't afford if insurance companies won't pay for them. You know, $400 for something because it's just not provided for by your insurance company. And I have really good insurance. So I think the, we need to understand the facts about it. I'm sure there's a lot of factors that I don't, that I don't understand, but we do have policymakers that can make some of those choices for us as a policy matter. And I think we need to, if we knew what they were, then we could talk to them about it.
Other thoughts on that particular cost-control area?
Well, there's, I think there's several layers to the problem. One is, as physicians, we need to be thoughtful about the cost of the therapies that we provide to people, and we are doing a better job of that. I know in my practice group, where we have actually cost information built into our electronic medical record that helps us to make better decisions, and we try whenever possible to use generic medications. And you can, there are some medicines that are expensive, but there are some medicines that are cheap. I just got six months of my high blood pressure medicine at Costco for $11, and it's a generic medicine, and it works just fine. So, you know, being a good consumer is one thing. The second thing is, policies have been made that are causing us to have a problem with the new drugs that are coming online. The drugs you see advertised on television cost $1,000 to $2,000 a month, not $400 a month. And for some reason, they don't mention that in the ads. And so if you're, if you're driving up demand for things that people think they want, instead of having thoughtful discussions about the right approaches, that's how you get expensive health care. Then the final thing is, when we started, you know, drug purchasing under Part D of the Medicare program, we didn't have any cost concerns about that. The government wasn't allowed to negotiate over prices. Well, that's not how you get a good deal. I mean, so we need to be more thoughtful about how we contract at a federal level, too. That's something we can't control here, but...
One piece that hasn't been mentioned on controlling drug expenses is that there's tremendous variation from one physician to another physician in what they prescribe and the cost of that. And it's not that one doctor's a better doctor than another doctor, more often than not, it's because one doctor has more information than another doctor. So Dave was mentioning having information about which are the generic drugs, and how many of those did I provide. If we organize all of the doctors in the community so everyone has the same information about the cost of all these different drugs and what the generic alternatives are, we can change the utilization patterns and not affect quality of care at all, and really drop the price in the same way that we're seeing it happen in pockets around the country. And that's part of the magic of getting ourselves organized.
I would like to add to that, that there is an extreme crisis in this country right now in the manufacture of generic lifesaving critical medications. For instance, in EMS, we are currently looking at a six-month back order for epinephrine, which is the mainstay of resuscitating people in cardiac arrest, which is one of the main reasons that we exist. We were on our last five boxes last week when a supplier found us another 50 to get us through until we can find some more. We contacted St. Joe's Hospital to see if they could help us out, and it was the first time that we had talked to them about, hey, maybe we could work together about this supply shortage, which we are all suffering under. This improved communication that we look forward to in the Transforming Health Care Project extends not only to what was just described and providers discussing options and prescription, but how can we manage what will continue to be, until there are major changes at the federal level, supply shortages in these critical medications that we all use?
One comment I would make is that often the copayment between a generic and a labeled drug is not material enough to us as consumers to make a better choice. And I think it's important that all of us really think about, do I need to have the more expensive drug? Because it's the insurance company who's paying the difference. Our copay may only be $10 difference. The other comment I would make is, could we avoid taking the drug in the first place? Many people take lipid-controlling drugs, and if they lost 20 pounds, they might not need the medication. And so I think, again, for all of us, sometimes it's easier to take a medication than to change behavior, and I'll speak for myself. But I think we all are at the heart of some of the health care costs, and it's not always easy to confront.
Well, thank you for a great segue to another topic area of questions. We've received a really great mix of questions, and just to remind folks who may have come later, that if you have questions and you'd still like to submit them on a green card, please do so. The folks at Waha will be reviewing all the questions that were asked of the panel and not, and making a frequently asked questions update on their website based on your input tonight. So please don't stop having questions while you're listening, and if you have them, just put your green card up, and someone will come down the row and collect it up from you. So on the subject of prevention, and this is directed to Larry and Dave, and then we'll let others weigh in as well. What is the role of prevention and lifestyle changes to prevent or reverse chronic disease? And why is so much money and resource dedicated to disease care instead of wellness activities?
I happened to look today at a kind of a chart of national health care expenditure, so I'm the kind of guy that does that sort of thing. So I noticed that there's all this inflation lines going up for every single part of the health care system except public health, which has been in a 4% decline per year for about the last four or five years. Why is that? I think that the political pressure and the money is out there with the institutional providers. They are better organized, they have put their message out there better, and at a macro level, that's a lot of what's happening. In this particular project, Transforming Health Care, we have heard over and over again from, boy, not only the providers, but especially the consumers, why are we spending so much money on taking care of problems after they have occurred? Why don't we build in a lot more change on the front end? So we're aware that lifestyle and environment and nutrition and issues like that are bigger drivers of health than the medical care system is itself. It is no small piece of work, however, to change the financial incentives to get them to drive more of the work of the health care system in the direction of prevention. And I bet you Dave has some thoughts along those lines.
Well, yeah, this is a great topic. It might take more than two minutes, but I'm going to try to do it. There's sort of two ways that I think of it. One is, what do we need to do as health care practitioners to help with prevention? And there's certain things we know make a difference. You know, certain screening tests we should do, immunizations people should get, interventions that we can make that can change something to really make a better outcome for somebody. So that's our responsibility to make sure those things get brought up to people and that we're held accountable for them. Then there's this whole other area of how do you help people act on the advice that they need to act on? And so I'll use the example, there may be people in this room, or maybe on this panel, who are not at what their recommended ideal weight is, or who exercise as frequently as they should, or who maybe use a little bit too much alcohol, or maybe they haven't finished their efforts to stop smoking, et cetera, et cetera. The human condition is, we all have different issues that we are dealing with that are not in our best health care interests. How do we help people deal with those issues because they're expensive and they cost a lot of money? The traditional medical approach has been to say, well, I told them to stop smoking, and they didn't, so they're just not compliant with our recommendations. Well, that's, that's a cop-out, really, but we've not seen that as our responsibility. There's now a whole new area of medical intervention that we call motivational interviewing, which is understanding what the barriers are to people acting on these recommendations and trying to help them figure that out so that they actually move in that direction to make some changes. And it's very important, not only for this, but to help prevent complications of chronic diseases. When you look at the cost of our health care dollar in the United States, 75% of it comes from dealing with the complications of chronic conditions. And these are conditions that you don't cure, that these are conditions that you live with and control. Diabetes, high blood pressure, heart disease, many others. And so of those people, is that the end?
Yes.
I'm done, okay.
It's great. It's taking hold. Those snappy cards are doing their job. Do you have something to add?
I'm going to just pick up where he left off. So you won't feel like you got cut off.
Go get him, Liz.
So I just want to echo this last piece, which is that probably about 80% of the dollars that we spend in health care services is for people with chronic conditions. And there are three things that we know about chronic conditions. We know what the progression's going to be, we know how to manage the symptoms, and we know that they are preventable. So if we want to get to that better health part, one of the challenges, and I think it's a challenge for the effort here in Watcomb County, it's that you're talking about a long-term investment. And the investment may not be with people my age. It might be with my grandkids, because we are talking about a generational investment. If we want to get to better health, we need to be starting with the kids that somebody's thinking about having nine months from now. And we need to make an investment in that generation. We can change the trajectory of their health. We have the knowledge, the expertise, the passion, the desire. Are we going to change the 65-year-old with congestive heart failure who refuses to stop smoking? I don't know. Can we manage the symptoms better than we're managing them today? Absolutely. But if we want to make a change, we have to do something that this country is not used to doing, a long-term visionary commitment to change the next generation that comes behind us. I believe we can do that. But this whole notion that we can't get better at how we're managing things today, I think we have to let that go and like tear it up and light a fire to it. We can do better at what we're doing today. The change is going to be what happens with the next generation.
Thank you for your passion and your information.
Yes, sorry.
Other thoughts on this question?
I have to pile on, because we act as if knowledge alone is enough to change behavior. But there isn't anybody in this room who doesn't know how to behave differently to get different health results, and we often make bad health choices. We might drive too fast, we might eat the wrong food, we may, you know, I don't have to go through the list, but knowledge is not what changes behavior. This is very complex, and we've got to find the support systems for those of us as well as the future generations. But we act as if, if I just tell you, this is going to change behavior. It's not. We have to find out all the different things that support people making complex health care and life changes. We're talking about living differently, and that's not easy.
Could I add one more thing? This is why I'm so excited about working as a community, because some of the answers aren't medical answers. You know, how do we cite our schools? Do we make it easier for kids to walk to school? Do we have sidewalks? Is it safe to ride a bike? How do you have a walkable community? All of these kinds of things have everything to do with how healthy you are, how much you move. Employers, how do you make it possible for your, for people to not sit at, all day at a desk? So they're so stiff when they're, at the end of the day, they don't feel like walking. I mean, there's all kinds of interventions we can take, all of which have a big impact on overall health, that don't start in the doctor's office, and that's why I think it needs to be a community discussion.
Can I just put a plug in for the Bellingham City Wellness Program? Because not only is that some of the support that you're talking about, and you can sign up, and there's, there's all kinds of support for what you're doing, it also saves us a lot of money on our insurance, because the more employees that sign up for the wellness program and participate, then they're giving us credit or a good incentive for continuing the program going. And I think the city of Bellingham has some really great, just great activities and programs and support. We're having a wonderful relaxation speaker coming tomorrow, because they said it would relieve our tension and our stress. We used her, but she's, you know, nationwide, you know, known, but it's worth having her come to give our employees one more thing to do.
So shifting from the preventative, we've got a question from someone who works with the mentally ill here in Watcomb County, and has a primary concern that keeps emerging, which is a lack of access to quality health care, especially mental health, for people with no health insurance. So how will this project improve access to quality mental health care for all of our citizens?
I'll take a start on that. Early on, when we began looking at transforming health care in Watcomb County, it very quickly became apparent that one of the bigger issues is behavioral health care, mental health and substance abuse in this community. Not only the access part of it, as is referenced in the question here, but also the question of sort of desiloing that care so that it is more mainstream together with the rest of care that's available, whether that's the, whether that's the dental care or the medical care. So there's been quite a lot of work in the Transforming Health Care Project going into figuring out how to move a traditional health system and a traditional behavioral health system that's made up of totally separate providers into the same universe. And I want to mention one other thing. We've had a project here in the community that is focused on treating the sickest of the sick people that come into the emergency room, and getting, getting a handle on what their issues are. And I got to tell you that 90 to 95% of the sickest people are people that are suffering from both a behavioral condition and a mental condition. What we do now, excuse me, in a medical condition, what we do now is we send the people in several different directions, and those two directions don't talk with each other. So a big part of our work is to find ways to bring those disparate communities that are in silos together.
So a couple of examples of that, we have a wonderful facility called the Watcomb Counseling and Psychiatric Center, and they are actually working with our medical group to place mental health counselors in some of our offices, and we've already done that in Ferndale. In fact, I just wrote a letter today supporting requests that they're making to get more funding to do that in some of our other offices. So one of the problems is people find it hard to get into this big city for these visits, and one of their biggest problems is they have, a lot of people don't show up for visits. So they've actually changed to having a walk-in schedule now where they're able to see people when they come, and they've been able to accommodate more people. And they're now starting a program where they're going to have practical, primary health care available at the mental health center for some of the people who need that to be delivered in that setting rather than in a more traditional setting. So trying to meet the needs of people where they are and where they're getting most of their care is what we're trying to do.
And I'd be remiss if I failed to mention that our two community health centers, C-Mar and Interfaith...
Yeah, already do that.
Have reasonably robust programs of integrating medical and behavioral health care, that they're still evolving, but those are models for the rest of us in the traditional system.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe underline that. You know, the two community health centers that do not have to deal with the commercial insurance market, that do not have to deal with all the multiple rules and regulations of how you bill for care, are able to organize the care around what people really need and have it all present in the same place. have it all present in the same place and make it available during the same visit. We have rules that prevent us from doing that. And so that's an example of what we could change if we started to take some of the responsibilities on for our community. It's ironic that the most financially needy are getting some of the best organized and best delivered care. And people ought to pay attention to that.
So in follow-up, a little more detail from some of the questions we're hearing from folks, is a question from a parent of a child, a young adult actually, a 24-year-old son with developmental disability, and indicating that primary care doctors frequently don't have a sense of how to support or care for individuals that are presenting with these long-term life complications, that parents are now looking for access to care for young adults. So could you speak to how the system's improvements will deliver the highest best care for families that live with a family member who have a developmental disability?
That's me again.
There is a question for you on this subject, but there might be others who can speak to it as well.
Okay. I, I think that's a, a challenge that we need to step up to meet, and I think it, part of the answer lies in great collaboration between occupational therapists, physical therapists, other developmental specialists, and the primary care physicians that are helping to provide that care, so that the appropriate kinds of care settings, the appropriate kinds of interventions are thought about ahead of time. This is actually very close to my heart. I have, I have a brother who's in his 50s with a developmental disability, and, and so we go through this all the time with him. And, and part of it was our working to find the right medical home for him, where they would really plan the visit ahead of time so that he could, you know, be dealt with in the proper way. And it isn't easy and it isn't cookbook. And I, I think frankly, there's some providers of care who aren't, may be emotionally equipped to take the time and, and approach it in the right way, so it takes a little bit of working to get the right person, and then that community collaboration.
Thank you for sharing your insight and story. Other thoughts or comments on access in this particular?
Quickly, I think one of the things that we can look forward to with the Transforming Healthcare Project is, with the greater collaboration of the medical care providers, is looking at different resources for, Dr. Lynch's clinic may have somebody who's, who's really a rock star at occupational health, who they can partner with somebody in another clinic who is excellent at developmental health, to put those people together to provide, as he was saying, the best medical home for the individual, and crossing some of those boundaries that have kept people from getting the care that they needed. I think this is something that I hope we can look forward to as the project goes on.
And we have a question that talks about another special caregiver population, which are, and this is a question for Nancy. How do you see your role in caring for and supporting local healthcare givers who are also healthcare consumers at St. Joe's and other institutions? So they're playing both a professional role as a caregiver, but also are serving as a family caregiver as well?
I think many of us find ourselves, you know, either caring for children or for adult parents, and we have both family and organizational responsibilities. I think the answer is it starts with you've got to take care of yourself first and foremost. And individuals have to, you're no good to anyone else unless you've taken care of yourself first. But I will tell you that many of the people I've worked with over my careers, be they nurses or doctors or other frontline caregivers, often are not so good at taking care of themselves because they've given it all at work, or they've given it all at home, or they've given it all both places, and their own health suffers. So I think the first advice and, and the direction we try, tried to provide is for people to take care of themselves first and foremost, so that they can come to work and provide the care that our patients need, and so that they can go home and be whole and provide what's needed. But it, it's definitely a balancing act, and I don't think there's a cookbook way to do it. I think it just starts with taking care of yourself first and foremost.
Shifting gears a little, we're going to talk now about paying for transforming healthcare. No small task. And there's a question here posed to both Larry and Dave Lynch. How are we paying for transforming healthcare? How is Waha funded? And how are decisions made to allocate funding to those greatest in need? Example, East Watcomb County, those kinds of areas.
Well, I'll start with the second question. How are those decisions made? Ultimately, Waha is governed by a board of directors. It's a pretty representative, responsible board of a lot of names you would recognize. That board is always looking to refresh itself, so this is an invitation to anyone who has an interest in Waha, that that's another avenue for participation for you. So our, our resource decisions ultimately are made by our, by our board of directors. I'm sorry, I-
How is the-
Oh, how are we funded?
-paying for our healthcare project funded?
So, Waha is funded sort of by hook or by crook. Mostly by hook. We get money from probably 20 or 30 different kinds of sources. We have a number of grants, some of which come from foundations. We have some government money from Office of Insurance Commissioner. We have a fairly large federal grant through the Affordable Care Act that pays for transitions of care out of the hospital. We get donations, we get financial support from major organizations. I'd like to call attention to the Peace Health Organization and to St. Luke's, who have been long-term, longtime supporters of Waha. We have contracts that we entered into for various kinds of services. And specifically to how the Transforming Healthcare Project itself was paid for, partly through St. Luke's Foundation and partly through contributions from a wide variety of providers in Watcomb County. So I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'd say somewhere between 20 and 30 different provider groups have contributed to this effort. And that was a conscious choice on our part. We believed that we wanted to have providers put their money where their mouth is about transforming healthcare. If you really believe in it, then step up to it in a number of ways, including financially.
Well, there's the Transforming Healthcare Project and Waha, and Larry spoke to that, and I'd say the three all-stars locally have been Peace Health Medical Center, the St. Luke's Foundation, which is our only community health foundation, and another one that I think should be mentioned is the Watcomb County Medical Society, who donates care through Project Access. So if you come into Waha and you get, you, you get made eligible for something, but if you come out the other end and you're not eligible for anything, then the medical society has organized a system of donated care for people so that people do get the care they need. But that's not a model for a sustainable transparent system to move forward with, but that's what we're doing right now. But then there's the other question, which I think was kind of implicit in that, which is how are we gonna pay for this healthcare that we want too? And the idea there, I think, is that we're gonna be contracting with current payers of healthcare to provide those services. So be that Medicare or Department of Social and Health Services or commercial insurance payers. The idea is we would, we would work with all of those people and then take responsibility and accountability for how we spend that money. And the way we're gonna pay for it is, you know, the Institute for Medicine said that as a nation, we raised, or we wasted in 2009, the last year for these statistics, $765 billion that was spent on care that did not produce results that made sense and shouldn't have been spent. If we solve that problem, we've paid for our healthcare and we've actually solved our budget deficit too. So it's a huge deal. And we think that by working together as a community, that's where our opportunity is. Better care and spending less money.
One of the things that worries me about that is Washington State and Watcomb County in particular, with some of the lowest cost of healthcare in the country. And if the rest of the country spent what we spent on healthcare, the problem would almost be solved. And I think specifically of Florida, New York, and Texas spend so much more than we do, but that doesn't take the burden off us. We have to do better, and that's something we're gonna have to work together as a community. And we've already demonstrated great results. We were just published in the Journal of the American Medical Association this week, and we started with some of the lowest readmission data in the country. And the project was looking at, can you take low utilizers and make them even better? And the answer is yes. We demonstrated an improvement in our already low readmission rates. So that's great news, but we have to continue to do better. And I think, again, it's a community like this that can.
We're gonna shift gears here a little. We've got another stack of comments with different topics. This has to do with patient rights, and it's directed to you Nancy. Collaborative healthcare reorganization needs to include discussions about what happens when community or patient values are contrary to the teachings followed by a religiously-based hospital. Can you comment on how the hospital addresses this need?
Now, we meet patients where they are. The organization certainly has a strong mission, values, and vision that's well-known, but we, we take patients where they are and we help them work to meet their healthcare needs within the community. It may be that somebody needs or wants a service we don't provide. We certainly provide information to make sure that it is available to people. But just be straight out, it's beginning and end of life that are, are issues within the Catholic healthcare organization. And Peace Health has, I think, a very good and strong position, and that is that those decisions take place between a doctor and their patient, and Peace Health does not interfere. Abortions specifically are not hospital procedures unless it involves the health and rights of the mother. And again, Peace Health has taken the position, when the mother's life is in question, we preserve the mother's life. Also at end of life, I, I commented on this earlier, but death with dignity and the prescribed medication takes two weeks between the time a patient is one diagnosed to have a life-ending condition and also is deemed competent. And once the prescription is written, it is two weeks between that decision and the administration of that medication. There's no patient sitting in a hospital for two weeks waiting for that medication. And so it isn't really a hospital issue. Where it comes into play for Peace Health is in hospice and home care. And again, if a patient desires this procedure and finds this medication and finds a physician who will prescribe it, we are, again, not going to interfere, and we would never abandon a patient because of their interest in taking a medication to end their lives. I think most importantly, as a, as a nurse, an oncology nurse who's taking care of people at end of life, we liberally administer pain medication. The intention of pain medication is not to end life, it's to relieve pain and suffering, fundamental to our mission. And there are times when that medication to end life, to relieve pain and suffering does end life, but it is not the intention. And so I think there's a very fine balance between individual needs and wants and the faith of our organization and its mission and values.
Thank you for clarifying an answer to those questions. I do have another one about electronic medical record, which has to do with what efforts are being made to implement a fully integrated EMR that is comprehensive countywide, statewide. How is privacy protected in a system like this?
Well, a couple of questions in there.
These got a big question for you.
Well, I don't think we will have a single electronic medical record that is countywide or statewide or nationwide. But there are some provisions under federal law that have said that these medical records must have the ability to talk to each other and exchange information in a meaningful way when patients give their permission. And I think that's probably the, the right answer too. I don't think we should have one great big database that we're all in that everybody has access to, although that works for some countries. They have that in Ireland, for example, but Ireland's about the size of some of our big cities, so it's a different situation. Having said that, that's one of the things that we're planning for in this effort. There will come a place and time when we would like to have what's called a health information exchange, where the, the different electronic records can be able to send information which could then be requested with a patient's permission by a consulting provider, so that it would be available to them when they provided that care. So we're moving in that direction.
So Dave has begun nicely on this, this topic. Just to kind of embellish a little bit on that, we're pretty well-wired as a community, and that goes back a number of years. The, the hardware and the infrastructure is here for all the providers to talk to each other. And most of the provider groups have gone to EMRs. So we're, if you look at this from a national perspective, we're probably at about 80% compliance with having an EMR in place. The problem is, we've got 20 different EMRs and none of them talk to each other. So that's what this HIE is that Dave is talking about. Without getting into the technology conundrum, it allows all these different EMRs to talk to each other. The obvious problem, which the questioner has raised, is what about my privacy and how do you respect that? And the way we are addressing that in this community so far is to have that data system be, in essence, a publicly accountable data system. It's not that everyone's gonna go pawing through the records, but the rules of the game for how confidentiality is perspect, is, is protected will be known to all parties and will be decided by a range of people, not a single organization or done in a back room somewhere.
I had the pleasure of sitting on the HIE Task Force in its initial phase through Waha and the Community Organizing Group for Health. And I, I would say as a, being there as a representative of the community, I was impressed over and over and over again at how seriously all the players took the privacy of data. And that was a number one concern for trying to bring this together. Now, having said that, the power and the value of sharing data across providers, both in terms of, the emergency room just saw this patient, they know they're a patient of Dr. Lynch's. We can talk about what their, their needs and care are better if we can share their data back and forth, rather than pulling files, pulling up electronic files. But there is value to the patient in that. There is also tremendous value and power in scrubbing that information of the personal elements and collecting it on a community-wide basis, something that we can do here in Watcomb County, much better than a larger metropolitan area could do for starting out with. And look at population-wide statistics of how are we doing in taking care of our patients with congestive heart failure or diabetes? This is an incredibly powerful tool, not just for the healthcare providers, but for the entire community in partnership to move forward towards better results.
I just want to use this, I guess, as an example of talking about the tension between decisions. Because at the same time that we want to have our data protected, what we're all also hearing is, when I walk up to that registration desk, I want them to pull up my information so I don't have to give it to them again. There is a tremendous tension between wanting both of those things to be true. And so how this health information exchange gets built is gonna really need your input, because it isn't a black and white set of decisions. These are, how do you make this seamless, easy, real-time accessible, plus secure, confidential, private? And, and I'm still not exactly sure, at least in Oregon, how they're gonna pull that off, but that's what folks have been working on. Because what I want is not to necessarily walk up to a registration desk and have to fill out a form and give somebody permission to pull up my data. We want the instantaneous, and we want confidentiality, confidentiality, privacy, and security. Somebody's gonna have to figure out which, which direction do we stretch in order to meet the needs of people in the community. And, and I just think this is a huge, a huge issue.
Well, Bridget Collins House put together a program because they wanted to share information about families and children. And the way they started it was with permission. So you, it wasn't perfect, it wasn't, everybody is all in, but they wanted to demonstrate that they could protect the confidentiality and demonstrate the benefit of having everybody who is dealing with the family and with the children be able to use that information. So sometimes when the problem is overwhelming, like you were just describing, and we went through this a lot at the policy level, at the state level, about personal information, sometimes you have to start maybe a little bit smaller, and if we're doing it as a community, to demonstrate that, you know, the information can be secure. And start with people who want to be able to do what you just said. I don't want to have to fill this out all the time. I want everybody who's treating me to have my information. And so, you know, there's the big enormous problem, and then there's a smaller solution that could build, be built on. And I think sometimes we need to look at things like that, because you can't, it's not really an all or nothing.
Other thoughts before we wrap on that question?
I just mentioned maybe two more things. One is, we silo some information in ways that makes care coordination difficult. One thing we do is we separate mental healthcare information from medical information. And that's very frustrating when, you know, as a, as a medical doctor, I will send somebody for mental healthcare, but then I can't necessarily get the information back about how they're doing, and it affects how I provide their care later. So we've got a really, and, and HIV is another example, where we wanted to keep that so secret, and yet it had everything to do with all the other things going on with the person. So all medical information needs to be dealt with very carefully. We should only share it with a person's permission, never when we don't have their permission. But we should be able to share it without unnecessary barriers in the way when it's for the good of caring for that person. And so there's still work to be done on that.
I want to thank folks for being so-
But we should be able to share it without unnecessary barriers in the way when it's for the good of caring for that person. And so there's still work to be done on that.
I want to thank folks for being so patient tonight and listening to questions that might not have been your own, waiting to see if yours was going to be even asked. And so I encourage you, if you did not hear your question asked tonight or have more specifics, please head to the Waha website, and that information will be provided both in your packets. You have all the handouts. And it will encourage you to participate in the survey so that this conversation is not just a one-night encounter, that this is the start of an ongoing conversation to learn more from the community about what's important, from those working on the front lines about what's possible, and seeing if we can bridge that tension between this vision for transforming the health care with the community that we currently enjoy and work with. So I'm going to let Sue wrap up with some thank yous to the rest of the folks tonight, but I want to thank the panelists and the participants this evening for your stellar ability to create an atmosphere where people could ask and be heard, and we thank you for that.
So, I mean, first, we really do have to thank Mary. I don't know if you saw what she was doing up here, but she was shuffling and reorganizing your questions to kind of consolidate. So again, thank you very much, Mary, and thank you to the League of Women Voters who supported having Mary be our moderator tonight. So thank you very much. Of course, we need to thank our panelists, all of you, Mayor Linville, Kelly, Dr. Dave Lynch, and Larry, and Sean, and Liz, and particularly Liz, who drove up from Portland today. So let's thank all of them for- Great job, and we appreciate just your straightforward responses and candor tonight. I don't know if you can even begin to think about how many people made tonight possible, but it was a lot. And I'm going to try to do this pretty quickly. But let's start by thanking the Community Organizing Group for Health. They have been out in force tonight. They're the group that of concerned citizens who are really interested in improving health and health care in our community. They planned this event. They selected and invited the panelists. They selected the questions. They identified the sponsors and supporters, and they've provided all the volunteers tonight to run this event. So let's thank them. To the City of Bellingham for providing the space. This actually event got moved twice because of the size of the crowd for tonight, and to Bellingham TV and their crew, which will allow us to broadcast this event on the VTV-10 channel. Also, we really need to thank our event sponsors, and we had some wonderful ones that helped financially with this event. Group Health, the Spirit Action Fund of the Watcomb Community Foundation, and the Watcomb Educational Credit Union. Thank you to our sponsors. It's important to recognize the staff of Waha, and in particular, I'd like to acknowledge Elia Moore, who was very instrumental in putting this event together tonight, and COG for all that they did. Now, we've come to the end of this evening. It's been two hours long, hard to believe, but hopefully you're going to walk away tonight feeling a little bit more engaged in this local health care conversation. And so we encourage you to do a couple of things. Please go to the watcomalliance.org website and read up on health reform activity. You'll actually get addicted to it if you start doing it. We'd like you to sign up for the Waha e-newsletter, and you connect with us on Facebook, Twitter, and LinkedIn. You can go to the links provided in your brochure to read up on local, state, and national health reform activity. You can join the conversation by completing the COG survey on Survey Monkey, and the URL is provided in your brochure. And when you leave tonight, spread the word about how important health care is to our community. Talk to your friends, your neighbors, and those favorite health care providers of yours. So thank you very much for participating. We hope to hear from you soon. Drive safely, and have a great evening.